All right, here we go. We are ready to start the meeting. Welcome to the Palmdale City Council Meeting. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let's go ahead and start with a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa.
Here.
Council members Olson.
Here.
Bettencourt.
Here.
Alakon.
Here.
Commissioner Shragasane.
Here.
And Bets.
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay, that takes us to the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. We have the Vida program here today, who's going to be presenting colors. So go ahead and come forward. All right, put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, tonight, we're going to be adjourning the meeting in memory of Jim Perthee, which is one of our former city managers. Okay, that takes us to the cute critter video. City Clerk, will you cue up that video? Please. Lots of good animals available for adoption at the Palmdale Animal Shelter. Not cats and dogs. You've got turtles and gerbils and all sorts of critters there. So if you're in need of a pet, please go to the animal shelter and adopt first. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and acknowledge the observances for the month of December.
The city of Palmdale would like to acknowledge the following observances: Universal Human Rights Month and National Pearl Harbor Day of Remembrance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, 4.1, Presentations, the update regarding the Certificate in Applied Positive Psychology for the program's third cohort, which is the Well-Being Lab. It's going to be presented by Ms. Nardi Lopez.
Good evening, Council. Nardi Lopez is the new city manager. And...
I am here today to present an update on the third cohort of the Certificate in Applied Positive Psychology program. I have to settle myself in because I'm a Christmas girl, and that was exciting out there. Put on my glasses here. Okay, so, as you know, this is our third cohort, and it's so exciting to be able to share what they have done to date and share about the benefits as well of what is being done in our community and how the council's support has been so amazing towards this of improving the quality of life in our community. So, in May 2023, the U.S. Surgeon General issued an advisory on the healing effects of social connection and community as he addressed the epidemic of loneliness and isolation in our nation. Research shows that healthy social connections are better predictors of our health than even cholesterol ones. In the certificate in the Applied Positive Psychology program, the CAP curriculum is a comprehensive overview of what contributes to well-being, including healthy social connections and relationships as well as the other PERMA pillars, including engagement, health, accomplishment, meaning, and positivity. And what you see here on the slide are some of the modules and lessons of the program that are followed throughout the five-month period. Benefits of the CAP. As shown here, the benefits of the CAP class are on three different levels. First, for the participants personally with enhanced well-being and self-awareness. Second, on the level of relationships, deepening connections across the valley. And third, building community. This is helpful in our community because the program gives participants a place to belong in their own safe community and give back to the community as an antidote to loneliness. And we move on to impact projects. So as part of the curriculum, the participants do an impact project at the end. And as you remember, each cohort is coached through designing and implementing their own impact project, taking a part of what they learn out into their spheres of influence in the community and in their homes and in their relationships. And here's a list of the impact projects from the third cohort. There's a total of 16 projects that are underway currently. The first one, as you see, is Thriving at Your Own Pace, which is a walking club for women. The Youth Bill Leadership Days incorporated positive psychology into the curriculum of this semester and next of their youth. This one in particular is the Hugs with a Purpose. And you do have a brochure in front of you of this one. And I was at the Mental Health Walk, and some of us were at the Mental Health Walk in October. And it was so amazing to me when I walked up to this surprise of this impact project to see what was taking place there. As you see, this is the group. These are four of the participants. And here, you see what they were doing in this booth. So they set up a booth, and the booth shows different people hugging because there's... This sounds touchy-feely, right, to some people? And it is. It is touchy-feely. But there is scientific justification for its importance. Research shows that we need eight hugs a day for optimal health, and there are better ways of hugging than what first meets the eye. As you can see in the hug samples in the brochure that you have, that was provided to you, there's different ways, right, that we hug? And so, a 20-second hug reduces the harmful effects of stress, relieves blood pressure, and ensures a healthy heart. So Hugs with a Purpose, I thought, was an amazing project of the many amazing projects that the cohorts have put together. And then we also have another one, which is Best Start Retreat to Advance. And this one, this project brought together families of children, 0 to 5, to help them learn strategies for better connecting with their children and building improved, healthy habits. And there is also a special section on this project that honored fathers' contribution to their families. A lot of time, we hear moms, right? And so, people focus a lot on the mom, but the fathers contribute an enormous impact on their children and their families, and it's important to recognize that. And then we have... And here's our group here for this one. And you know, on this one, I just want to say that the importance of this too is that this group, you know, they work. Some of them work together, and they interact, right? So they're learning this in this, and they're taking it back to their workplaces and to the work that they do, the prevention work they do. And this one is Let's Keep the Good Going. And part of this project, it consists of several parts. One is the presentation of a plaque to you, the council, in appreciation of supporting the CAP program. And at this time, I would like to ask that we do have CAP participants here today from different cohorts. And so, if you are here, if you would like to stand, please, as we recognize you and we acknowledge you. Yes. As we acknowledge them for their participation, their commitment and contributions of improving the quality of life and well-being in our community because they keep on giving, and that's why it's called Let's Keep the Good Going. And at this time, I would like to invite the participants of this group, Rose Medina, Barbara Smart, and Joe Ennis, to present the plaque to the council. Like, should we hand them to Rowelle Mayor?
Or would you like to come?
They're going to go to... Yes, you each get one.
Happy holidays.
Thank you so much for your support.
It's not a chocolate heart?
Rose? Rose? Would you like to say a few words on the thank you?
Hi. Without you and your support, none of this would happen, and none of us would be able to go out into the community and keep the good going. So once again, we want to say thank you so much. And have a wonderful holiday. Keep the gratefulness in your heart. And all of us, keep the good going. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to add that we do have our instructors here with us today, Louis, Laura, and Thelma Schultz, who we could not do this without them with all of their leadership and commitment to working with us, right? And providing us and giving us the tools, the participants, the tools to do good work out there in the community. And to close out, this is the third cohort. You know, feeling good, struggling well, functioning effectively. And we leave with a quote to inspire people. Don't show them your superpowers. Show them theirs. And I believe through this CAP program, that is what's taking place in the community. And they are then giving back because then they're having other people, you know, that they can show their own superpowers to improve our community and the world. Any questions?
No, I would just like to say thank you so much for the staff for bringing this forward, Louis and your team. Fantastic job. Thank you for bringing such positivity into our community, especially for those who really needed it over the past few years. It's been very difficult for our community with everything that's happened. But you've been a bright, shining light, and you've helped people get through some hardships. And you've helped people, helped other people, which is the point of the program. So thank you for bringing that to our community and being that beacon of hope. Counsel?
Yeah, I just... It couldn't be a more appropriate time to bring this forward in between Thanksgiving and the season of giving for the holidays. The CAP program is quite literally the gift that keeps on giving because, as you said, one seed is planted in one person, but then a flower blooms, and its petals fall, and another blooms in its place. It's a beautiful, remarkable program. Thank you so much for leading each cohort. There's been three. We're going to authorize, I hope, a fourth cohort. And we recently and also are in this action today going to expand our youth program, which is again remarkable. We're doubling from four to eight youth summits because our youth can benefit exponentially from all of the lessons that are learned and shared through the CAP program. Thank you, Nardi. Thank you to each and every one of you for all that you have done to uplift our community. And thank you for these. These are amazing. God bless you guys.
One last piece of information. Tomorrow, Louis, correct? The cohort will be sharing all their impact projects during the day in their in-person session, and they will be doing their graduation. So Marilyn will be providing those details to you. And if anybody would like to go and listen to the impact projects or attend the graduation, that would be a great opportunity.
Bring your tissues. Last time, I was crying. It's so touching.
Thank you much. Thank you very much.
No, I'll say something real fast. You know, for us, we have to be financially responsible to the city. And when we make investments, those investments need to have a purpose, and we want to see them pay off. And this is an investment that we can tangibly see with our own eyes. I point to my friends with the Boots on the Ground Alliance and what they do to welcome home Vietnam veterans and for the veteran community.
Yes.
As a veteran myself, just that alone has made this worthwhile. And they are just one of dozens and dozens of stories. So thank you, Louis, for everything you do to the boots on the ground and everybody else that takes part in this. Thank you for making the city better by making yourselves better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very briefly, as some of you may know, I have been concerned with the issue of mental health in our community. And it's been a real struggle to get a program that actually penetrates into the... Into those families that are struggling with people that have acute mental health issues. And I know that this program isn't really directed towards that, perhaps indirectly, but I don't think it's the real purpose of this to actually deal with what's going on in our streets. If any day that you want to see persons that are having mental health issues, but I'm talking about sickness, hang out on Palmda Boulevard. And it's getting worse every day. And then, we're spending millions of dollars, and in fact, billions of dollars, with the homeless funding at every level of our government, all the way from local government all the way up to the national government, spending many billions of dollars. And yet, the homeless problem becomes worse and worse. And all the money that we throw at it is not helping. And I just want our city to do something positive. I think this is a small item towards that. But I would like to see that when I go through this program that you have, which I think is a wonderful program as far as making people feel good, perhaps address some of the resources in some of the cohorts and some of the seminars to address the issue of people who may actually be struggling with somebody that has a mental health problem in their home. Small part. I know it's a huge problem. But I offer this as a positive. I don't mean it as a negative. But I just want us to understand the enormous, enormous, painful crisis that is going on right here on our streets. And we're not dealing with it. We're just not doing it, on any level. But I applaud you for what you're doing. I join Councilman Olson's concerns about being responsible financially. I expect that we will be seeing something good for the money that is being spent here. But I don't want to throw a wet blanket on this, but the problem of mental health is really acute. And I hope that perhaps your program will do more to identify families that are dealing with problems in their own home. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in here and just say that sometimes you can't see mental health issues. They don't have to be walking down Palmda Boulevard. Sometimes, within each of our own homes, there are people who are struggling with mental health, with depression, and with loneliness. I suffer from depression because I have a terminal illness. And having all of you out there as a resource for me when I get down and I need to reach out to somebody and talk is a blessing. Most of you would never have guessed that I struggle because I sit up here and I'm a public figure. But every one of us is just a second away from suffering. And suffering in silence because people like me and a lot of people in my shoes don't want to show that they're depressed or they're lonely because we hold powers of leadership. And it's not a very flattering thing sometimes to wear out in public. So each one of you is a little shining light. It's something for me to look forward to seeing. And every time one of our cohorts graduate, I know that there's more people in the community that are aware that people like me suffer. And you wouldn't see me walking down Palmda Boulevard and know that I'm suffering. So please be aware that you have to recognize not just the obvious signs, but the personal and internal struggles that some of us fight within our own homes. So thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for being a resource for our community.
Thank you. Very well said. It's okay. We're all here to support each other. It's okay to be human. We're leaders, but we're also members of the community. We're residents in the community, just like everybody here. And the best thing about this program, I think, is that it has a proactive approach where, just like Councilmember Bettencourt said, you may not see somebody suffering, but the beautiful part about a program like this, it's a proactive approach. It catches somebody before it gets to that point. Yes, the problem is getting worse, but we're doing everything we can to be proactive. There's never going to be a one-size-fits-all. Everyone has their own unique story and situation. But with this program, we're at least trying to help people before it gets to that tragic point to where there's no return. So thank you for having that resource, providing that resource in our community. All right, anybody else?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so it takes us to public comments. But first, city manager, do we have any items to pull from tonight's agenda? Okay, saying none. Madam Clerk, can you please play the Public Comment Code of Conduct and read the Public Participation Statement into the record, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Now is the time for public participation on Section 6, which is the Housing Authority Consent Calendar, Section 7, the Regular Consent Calendar, and Section 8, New Business. Now is the time for public comments. We have Roger Soderstadt.
Well, I'm glad Mr. Olson pointed out fiscal responsibility. It's good to see a little humor in these chambers. Also, I'd like to point out that there are a number of mental health programs, as was mentioned here, national, state, county, and local. And mental health is getting worse. There are a large number of homeless programs. As was pointed out here, we're spending billions on this problem, and it's getting worse. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
We have no more speaker cards for this section.
Okay. Commissioners, would you like to pull any items from the Housing Consent Calendar? Or are we ready to entertain a motion or a second to approve the balance of the Housing Authority Consent Calendar?
I'll move.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Let's go ahead and vote.
Do you want me to second it again?
No.
Okay.
No. Thank you.
There we go.
Start voting, please.
It's hard to see past the decorations. That's good. Thanks, Miguel.
Just to sit down there.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to adjourn the Housing Authority. And that takes us to item number seven, the Regular Consent Calendar. Councilmembers, do we have any items we'd like to pull?
No. Seeing no discussion, I'll move the consent calendar.
All right, we have a motion.
A second.
We have a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting.
All right, thank you very much. Item number eight, New Business, Rotation of Incumbents Serving as Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. And we have a staff report on this that's going to be presented by the city attorney?
A very brief one. It's certainly always a bittersweet time. We want to thank Mayor Austin Bishop for his term and his loyal and august Mayor Pro Tem, Richard Loa. We thank them for their last year of service, but they're in through the end of this month, so we can still get to them as needed. And we look forward and thank the incoming mayor, Mr. Loa, and Mayor Pro Tem, Councilwoman Bettencourt, for their pending service. This is all set pursuant to the city's ordinances. This was adopted several, almost a year ago, to allow for an orderly exchange of governance and management and continuity in the city. So goodbye and welcome.
Well said. Well, it's been an absolute pleasure Well, it's been an absolute pleasure and an honor to serve as the mayor of Palmdale. It's an experience I'll never forget. And to have the opportunity to lead the city with an amazing council and a great staff is just, it's a complete blessing. Thank you for everyone that's been here along the way. And I'm looking forward to serving for another four years.
Good for you. Congratulations.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? Or I think it takes us to item number nine. Do we have oath? Or is that the, is that 10?
What we're going to do first is we're going to do the presentation of the plaque.
Okay.
For the mayor, to you, mayor, and the ceremonial passing of the gavel.
Okay. All right. I have, I have the ball. I have the gavel. But remember, I don't have to, it's a ceremonial. I don't have to give it up for real until next month.
That's right.
Senator, council, would you mind joining me down here?
Do you want all of us?
All of us down?
All of us.
Do we all go in down here?
I guess so.
You know you have to pay for that.
We did already.
We did.
Okay, so thank you all for being here this evening. And we are so blessed to have had Mayor Bishop as our mayor for this past year. And we would like to thank you for your service. The Palmdale City Council hereby acknowledges the outstanding contributions of Austin Bishop for his dedication and commitment to serving the community and its citizens as our mayor. We express our sincerest appreciation, presented this day, December 2024, and on behalf of the entire city staff. Thank you so much for your leadership this past year. And I'm sure council might want to say a few words and/or at least have a picture. And I'm going to give this to you.
Thank you very much.
Can we even you guys?
Yeah. Maybe Eric, can you want to get on the side? And then maybe in the middle?
And we'll have a quick scoot over, yeah. Okay.
I still have it for another month. Well, I got to close out the meeting.
So for the benefit of the public, we just want to note that the actual passing of the torch and the effective date of this action is January 1, 2025.
Okay, so that brings us to item number 10, resolution reciting the election results. Madam Clerk, can you please read the resolution into the record?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, California, reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 5, 2024, declaring the result and such other matters as provided by law. Mayor and council, as you will see, you have a memo before you stating the election results that were received from the county clerk. I will read section one of the, of the resolution. It states that the whole number of ballots cast in the precincts except vote by mail voter ballots and provisional ballots was 23,281. And that the whole number of votes by mail voter and provisional ballots cast in the city was 56,504, making a total of 79,785 ballots cast in the city. I will read section three. The city council does declare and determine that Austin Bishop was elected member, was elected member of the city council in District One for a full term of four years. And Richard Jesse Loa was elected as member of the city council in District Two for a full term of four years. And that measure PD passed with 54.99% votes. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and call for public comments. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item?
I currently have no speaker cards on this item.
All right, seeing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion or a second to adopt resolution CC 24-088.
I'll move to adopt.
I'll second it.
We have multiple motions and seconds?
Okay, I have it. I have it, I have it, I have it. All right, got it. Here we go. And then I'm going to record that. Okay, start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. So item number 11, administration of oath of office. Madam Clerk, would you like us to come down?
Yes.
All right, here we go.
Mr. Loa?
Go first.
Yes, sir. You ready for this? You're good.
Am I doing, we doing it at the same time?
We're not going to do it at the same time. We're going to do them individually this time. Repeat after me. I, Austin Bishop.
Austin Bishop.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
I'll have to get you to sign.
All right.
Copies and I'll sign it after. Here, turn to Mayor Pro Tem. You have anybody who'd like to join you up here?
Pardon?
You have anybody who wants to join you up here?
Okay, do you want me to raise my hand?
Yes, sir. Yeah, you can stand right with him. I, Richard J. Loa.
I, Richard J. Loa.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, item number 11, actually, item number 12, City Manager's Report. I got to lean over because I can't see you over the decorations.
You're going to miss those decorations when they're gone. Thank you all so much for attending this evening. My heart is so warm and so full. I think we probably had over 1,000 people outside tonight for that tree lighting in the Wellbeing Lab. And what a great community we live in. So I just want to take a moment and be thankful and grateful for that. But moving on, we have so much going on between now and the end of the year. We've got a Christmas Carol Friday, December 6 at the Playhouse. Jolly Holiday at Marie Kerr Park in the Amphitheater this Saturday. Don't miss it. There's snow for the kids. There's all kinds of fun things. We've got our annual Christmas parade. This year, we have a change in location. We are bringing it back to Palmdale Boulevard. It's going to start at 20th East and Dump Out, Dump Out, that's terrible. And at Poncet Lawn Square, right here, where we're going to have a small festival as well and a posada put on by the AV Hispanic Chamber. So it's going to be a great, beautiful day. So come out, line our streets. And I think Nardi told me there's about 125 entries this year, so we're very excited about that. And with that, we want to also make sure that the community is aware that the south, I'm sorry, the northbound and southbound at different times, Palmdale Boulevard off-ramps will be closed beginning 9:00 a.m. on Monday, December 9 through 6:00 a.m. on Monday, December 16. We apologize, but you'll love the end result here in about 18 more months. But we do have to close those completely to get some of the work done. So please plan accordingly for that seven-day period. And then we also, last but not least, are taking reservations for Santa's workshops. So come join us for a visit with Santa, purchase a package at the Palmdale Playhouse. All the information is on our website. And we, that's the end of my report. Mayor?
All right. Thank you very much. Job well done. Item number 13, council reports, announcements, and requests for future agenda items. Council, what do we got?
I put mine on file.
Okay.
I've got mine here somewhere. There's been a lot of activity in the month of December, a very busy time in November, I should say. But I just want to comment that one of the most important events in the calendar of Los Angeles County, State of California, United States, is the election. And that was held this month, in November, I should say. And we had 79,000 voters in the city of Palmdale vote. And I think that's outstanding. I don't know what the exact percentage is, but it's an outstanding participation in the democratic process. And I want to thank all of the voters in all of the districts, in all five districts, for coming out and voting, having confidence in our presently constituted city council. And I want to thank all of the voters that voted in my favor. I appreciate it very much. And I'm looking forward to a great year in 2025. It's a wonderful number. 2025 has a good ring to it. And as our esteemed city manager has indicated, there's a lot on the plate for the city of Palmdale. There's just an enormous amount of things that we are looking forward to getting accomplished for the benefit of all of the residents of our city. And that's what we're up, every single one of us up here. That's what we're up here for, to benefit all of the residents of the city of Palmdale. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Olson?
Okay, my report has also been filed. November 1, we attended the ribbon cutting for the youth soccer team at Yellen. We are making a $19 million investment in the Yellen Park. Part of that is with funding from Assemblymember Juan Correio in the city of Palmdale. We are sponsoring the new pro team's youth league. This is a pathway to the pros for our kids. And so this was important for me because I wanted all of the kids in our city to drive by, especially on the east side of Palmdale, and be inspired that there is a pathway to something better for them. So to see that in my council district is, you know, just a passion of mine. And I couldn't be more happy that we were able to execute that. There was a couple of military balls, and I emceed the Veterans Day ceremony at Poncet Lawn Square. Again, my apologies to the Navy. But that was... It was a fun event. Us veterans, if you were there, veterans, we like to give each other a hard time. And it really came out of me that day. But it was fun, and we do it out of love. Other than that, congratulations to those that were just sworn in. I look forward to working with you, at least for my next two years here. But for measure PD, it won by a 10-point margin. To me, that was the voters saying that they have faith into this city council to be the overseers of their tax dollars. I think they put a lot of faith in us, a lot of trust in us. And I just want to say, I am determined to make sure that every single penny of that measure is reinvested right back into the city of Palmdale. I think we have a lot of growth to do. We have a lot of opportunity. And it's time to galvanize this trust and execute a vision for the city. I want it to focus on quality of life issues, public safety, graffiti, illegal dumping, the things that are holding us back. Like I've said before, we need to clean up our house before we invite people in. And now is the time. We have the tools and resources. And so I hope everybody joins this vision to reinvest that in the city. Let's build Palmdale. Let's be good stewards of the tax dollars. And, and thank you for the confidence in us.
I just want to take a moment to thank and congratulate Mayor Bishop for his year of service. Thank you for all that you've done. You've done a remarkable job as mayor of our city. Congratulations to both you and, I don't know what we would call him, mayor pro tem now, Mayor Loa, on your victorious elections. And to the two incoming officers who will lead us into the new year. Congratulations to all of you. My report is on file. The AV Alta event was remarkable, seeing how we are going to transform the lives of the youth in the Antelope Valley is, is really a beautiful thing to watch. So that was a wonderful event. The Veterans Day events were always fun. But it's Kicks for Kids 2.0. I did a wonderful event in partnership with LA Care, Blue Cross for back-to-school. We gave out nearly 1,000 shoes to kids as they entered into the new school year. Shoes really sort of uplift confidence and encourage success academically. So we just want to do, this is a 2.0, this is a winter edition. So we are going to give out a variety of winter boots to kids in McAdam Park on the east side, December 21. And I've got to just shout out all of the folks that are sponsoring this event. Salva, Penny Lane, Centers, LA Care, Blue Cross California, Trinity Harvest. We're all chipping in. It's going to be a beautiful winter family festival. Please come out December 21. We will have the Kicks for Kids booths. And so bring your kids, and you guys, we'll size you up, boys and girls of all sizes under the ages of 17. And we will have supplies while they last. But get there early, I would advise you, because last time the line was wrapped around the park. So get there early. 1:00 p.m. is when we start. And we look forward to seeing you. Happy holidays.
Okay. I attended similar events, like the soccer field, which is absolutely amazing. I filed my report as well. One of the things that sticks out that I think is important to mention or talk about tonight is the 14 freeway. We had a, we had a meeting, it's the North LA County Safety and Mobility Improvement Scoping Meeting. The basics of that roughly are Caltrans is seeking input from the residents of Palmdale and the surrounding areas about the improvements that need to be made to the 14 freeway. It hasn't really changed since the 70s, since they built it. And right now, we are advocating for them to have consistent three lanes with a carpool all the way through. Anyone that commutes knows that it goes from three lanes to two lanes back and forth throughout Akin and Aqua Dulce. So we're doing what we can to reduce, to tell Caltrans we need those additional lanes and safety improvements, such as lights, new signage, et cetera, for the commuters, which is a large majority of our residents are commuting back and forth to the valley or LA. So that's one of the meetings I wanted to talk about. And we are actively fighting as much as we can to have the, have Caltrans find the funding and make those improvements on the 14 freeway. Other than that, the rest of my report has been filed. So that's going to take us...
I just want to add one thing.
Yeah.
I was looking around for my, for my memo, and it's been filed. But there's one thing that I wanted to follow up on, a meeting that I had with Assemblyman Juan Correio. And that is to address the issue of the 51-50 hold, mental health issue. It is a very stringent standard that is designed essentially for... that is designed essentially for individual liberty, which is a great public policy issue to have. But in some instances, it is very stringent. It needs to be modified. And Assemblyman Correa has accepted to look into this matter. I've also talked to Supervisor Barker about joining in attempting to study this and make changes to it if it's necessary and complies with the law and the Constitution. And I've talked to Senator-elect, I think now she's been sworn in as Senator, if I'm not mistaken, right, Suzette Vaidaris?
Yeah, today was the day.
And she also is agreeing to meet. So I had a productive meeting with Assemblyman Correa, and I appreciate that very much. But this is something that we will be looking to do during the 2025 session, is to address this issue to see what the city of Palmdale can do to apply resources to deal with that. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, now is the time for non-agenda public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody wishing to speak?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have Eugene Hernandez.
All right. Hi, Eugene.
Now we have seen the final facade fallen from the Biden administration of him, despite many statements that he's not going to pardon his dirtbag son. He did it. And I think, you know, in reality, I think his administration has been one of the worst administrations since Woodrow Wilson. You know, under his leadership, we have a war going on in Ukraine, but we don't have enough funds for hurricane victims in Florida. His full support of a genocide going on in Gaza is outrageous. And he has not produced anything for the American people. You know, and it's a stain on the face of the Democratic Party because they fully support him. They fully support Kamala, who spent a billion dollars to run. And they have not had any working-class issues in the forefront of the Democratic Party. And I think that the legacy of Biden is going to live on for a long time. You know, we, the American people, deserve better representation. And whether it comes from the Republicans or from third parties, there is something to be gained by not voting Democrats because they don't have the interests of the working class or minorities in mind. You know, there's millions of Latinos and blacks in jail for lesser crimes than Hunter Biden. But they don't have a powerful father like him to give them a pardon. And they languish in these jails. So that's an outrage. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have David Harris, Community Development Center.
Hey, Dave.
Hey, how are you?
Good, good to see you.
Well, I came up to address one thing, but Richard, you touched on some key things tonight. 51-50 is a big deal. And in mental health, being held for 72 hours isn't the cure. Having programs that actually follow up and go through strategic with therapists and doctors on a long-term basis. So I totally agree. And I'm really glad you're getting the state legislature and already looking forward to building something positive with the federal government because it goes about that high. But I really wanted to say, congratulations on a great tree lighting ceremony. Really good for the community, right? And Mayor Bishop, I got to say, you are by far... I've worked with many cities in the San Gabriel Valleys, San Fernando Valleys. And you've done an outstanding job representing this city during your term. I go to a lot of events. Sometimes I'm just in the background. But every time I see you, whether it's on the national stage, at a conference via video or photos, you do the best in representing our city. So thank you for what you've done. You've transformed our meetings. They're orderly. I know you have a lot of help from a great city attorney. Many would disagree. But yeah, you've done an outstanding job. So thank you. And yeah, thank you, Richard. I look forward to what you're working for in 2025 on that. So and congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
And I have some shoes for you.
All right. Thank you, David.
We have AV Youth Build. AV Youth Build.
How are you guys doing today? I'm actually opposed to AV Youth Build. My name is Jasmine Stroud. I'm 28 years old. And before I started speaking, I just wanted to speak with a prayer before I speak. I wanted to open up with Collisions 4 or 5. It says, "Walk in wisdom towards them that are without. Redeeming the time, let your speech be always with grace. Seasoned with thought, that ye may know how to answer every man." So the reason why I wanted to oppose AV Youth Build is because, once again, I am a youth. I experienced the unjust experience there. And I'm not here to bring anybody's business down. That's supposed to be for the community. But I do want you guys, as the city of Palmdale, to start looking into the funding that you guys give to these programs. As you guys have once said, you have to look into your own house before you step into the community. And I think that you guys should really step into these houses and these fundings and these nonprofits, organizations that's asking for your help. I think you guys should start looking into the fundings that you guys give them. That's really all that I have to say because in regards to this building and this people that I'm opposing, I have went out to the AGCC, the Adult Skills Center, that puts people out into the communities to give people these jobs and to connect them to other resources in the community. And I actually spoke to a person there, but she couldn't say too much because you guys can't say too much. And it's so unfair sometimes when you are in a higher position and they put you inside of a bond. But she couldn't say too much. But she did express the fact that they don't even send people to that building. And that spoke value to me. So when I heard that, I had to take initiative. As a young mother, I'm only 28. Once again, I have one son. And I'm a security officer, armed security officer at that. I've worked at the AV mall. I'm a licensed esthetician. I do everything that I can do to make sure that me and my son thrive in this community. And when I experienced the injustice at AV Youth Build, I knew that I wasn't the only one and that it had to be something more done. So that's when I decided to come to the city council. I've never in my life spoke out like this, ever, nor have I ever been to a city council meeting. But I'm here today. And I want you guys to look into the fundings that you guys give to these people and check on their houses.
Thank you for coming and coming up and speaking. No, we know it's not easy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
LA Care.
How you doing?
Good evening, very good. Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to say, I love the decoration. It's giving you a glow. So thank you for that. So actually, I'm here today to talk about an event that we're doing. And so LA Care, Salva, Penny Lane, Trinity Harvest, we're doing a winter family festival Saturday, December 21st. This event is going to take place from 1:00 to 5:00 at McAdams Park. Well, what are we going to have at this event? Well, first of all, we're going to give the kids toys, right? Very important to give the children toys. Sometimes some of us might think, well, a toy might not be a big deal. Someone who came from poverty, like myself, someone that my mom couldn't afford to give us toy during Christmas, a small toy, no matter what it is. As a child, we appreciate it. And you bring a lot of smiles. Another thing we're going to do is provide resources, right? Sometimes as a community member, and I've worked in this field for a long time. And sometimes we don't know what's out there, what programs are starting, what programs are ending. So that's what we're doing in the event. We want the community to engage and connect and be aware. Because maybe today you will not need the service or the resource, but maybe tomorrow you will. And at least you know where they're located. Another thing, we're going to have music and food, and we're going to cheer. And one of the best things that we're going to be doing is giving out shoes. Thank you to Andrea Larkon. She will be providing that shoes for kids. Last year in the Backpack Event, the line was crazy. I even said to my staff, who's holding the line? Why is everybody in one line? Well, everybody wanted shoes. So thank you, Andrea Larkon. Thank you, sir, for giving us shoes. Very appreciated. If anyone would like to donate shoes, we are taking shoes, please. Again, Rocío Castellanos. I work for LA Care and manage the community center on Palmdale Boulevard and 20th Street East. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rocío. I just, I know we're not supposed to engage. I just want to say thank you for your leadership. You are a remarkable community resource, a beacon of light for so many people. Your facility is on Palmdale Boulevard, and people know to come to you when they're in need. They come for boxes of food. They come for access to medical care. They come for access to mental health services. They come when they need a jacket. I mean, when they need maternity care. They come to you with every need, and you welcome them with open arms. You don't ask, you know, too many questions. You just, out of the kindness of your heart and with the benefit of the resources that you are equipped with at LA Care, you have been able to do remarkable things and change lives for so many people in our community. And the event, yes, one toy, one pair of shoes can change a kid's life. I've been there. I know you've been there. So thank you so much for all that you do.
You've been there seven or eight years now, right? Almost eight years?
That facility has been there for eight years. I've been there for four years. But I've been living in the AV for 22 years.
That's awesome. It's a beautiful facility. I remember eight years ago when we opened it.
Thank you. We're looking for a new space, just FYI. We're looking for 20,000 square feet.
You've outgrown.
Yes, yes. It's too small for us. And actually, I just wanted to say thank you, Andrea. But we don't do this work by ourselves. It's partnership, partners. There's a lot of partners here that I work with. And thank you for always taking my phone call. Because sometimes we get those phone calls that we have someone that hasn't ate for two days. And I can't go home knowing that someone hasn't ate for two days. So I call my local partners, find out if they can help us and support each other. And that's what we do. That's what we do here in the AV. Thank you.
Thank you.
AV Nan.
You done?
Good evening. I'm Lou Walker, AV Nan. I'm also here on behalf of a couple other partner organizations, The Knowledge Shop Los Angeles, as well as Influential Arts. I wanted to share challenges, educational challenges that are peaking here in the Antelope Valley that's shedding a light on what's going on in Los Angeles, especially with their BSAP initiative and addressing the most at-risk communities. The Antelope Valley should be known as Aerospace Valley. California Jobs First had a presentation a couple months ago, right there at Antelope Valley College. Three days notice, that's what they gave the community. And I was like one of two organizations represented. And they were detailing $500 million pouring into the Los Angeles County for jobs, job development. And they made an announcement about aerospace companies leaving the Antelope Valley. Why is that? It's directly related to the educational disparities. And there was, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Jasmine Stroud.
Jasmine Stroud? Ms. Stroud? She did share an important trend that I'm seeing in the Antelope Valley as an analyst, as an auditor. You should really value effective funding. You should really value quality organizations that yield significant impacts. Celebrations are nice, but improved test scores would be better. Really engaging the community. I will be sharing this next few weeks coming up with my mentors and other organizations, my research. I will share it with you. But we're focused on the programming, specifically at the Course in Arts Colony. Auditing the quality of the programming, especially with MHA LA and other organizations that definitely could use an audit.
All right, thank you very much. Any more speakers?
There are no further speaker cards on this item.
Okay. Who said it?
My name is Marcia. So in November, I spoke loud and clear when I cast my ballot. I spoke in a way that I hope that you received that vote. It's very important that you, after the election, don't forget the voices that brought you to those chairs. I would like you to review the speaking arrangements at council meetings and to divide the consent calendar appointments and new business into separate categories, each with two minutes. And the closed session, you can put wherever you want to because we don't hang around for that anyway. But our voices are very important. And it's not just when it comes to an election our voices are important to you. Our voices should be important every single council meeting. You should be able to hear from those that live here in Palmdale, maybe are just passing through or from another city that are positive or negative about our city. But two minutes for three categories is unrealistic. The consent calendar is general business, but many times are controversial subjects. And new business, we should be able to have a separate voice about that. And also, when you print the agenda, please write down under the numbers, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that there will be a public speaking opportunity. So we need to be able to tell you, talk to you, and you need to be able to hear us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do you have any other speakers?
Javier Flores, representing myself today. Yesterday, I was very fortunate to attend a breakfast meeting, a meeting in the morning that was held by LA Care. that was held by LA Care, and it was with the Sheriff's Department, maybe five, six individuals from the Sheriff's Department were there. I had never seen anything like it, every single one of the representatives spoke Spanish, except for the captain, and they all interchanged and dialogued with the attendees in Spanish, answered all their questions, and I thought it was a wonderful, wonderful event. The one thing that kept coming up over and over again, of course, was the issue of immigration and, and the stress and the fear that is starting to be felt by the immigrant community again, it was very palpable. We could feel it, we could sense it, you know, we remember that fear back in 2013, 14, 15, when they were arresting people and mothers dropping off their children, taking their cars, leaving them to walk back home. There was a, a real palpable fear then of immigration and the ICE and, and raids and things of that nature, but what was very clear is that the Sheriff's Department stated emphatically that they would not be helping ICE in any way, shape, or form, and we got reassured with that message, but we wondered, I, I left the meeting wondering, well, that's great to hear that the Sheriff's is taking that position to let the community know to ease their, their fear, but I wonder what this body's gonna do. You know, will you be putting together any kind of forum, educational forum, to let them know how you two are on the immigrant side, and how you realize that they make up 40,000 people in your city, and that you're, you're gonna be fighting for them and for their rights? I'd like to know what, what you plan to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, one more? Hello.
I would just like to share a little bit of information, November 30th, both of our local high school football teams took the championship. Highland High School won their CIF Southern Section, and Palmdale won their CIF Southern Section, so we have two teams that are vying for a state championship. I'm a little biased, my daughter's a Falcon, and I have a nephew that's a coach at Highland and a nephew that's playing, so go Bulldogs and go Falcons. And as I missed the last meeting, when you guys closed your memory of ZZ Top, Steven Wood, there was one memory that he had that was his very last cleanup, and that really meant a lot, it was when Olson, Bishop, and Rhonda jumped on his tailgate, and if you would have heard the conversation in that cab, sure, it was unfiltered, but he was so impressed at you guys, and hopefully next year, back at it again, but thank you guys, and everything just looks beautiful. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I say one more thing, because you reminded me. Remember when the Palmdale Knights Youth Football Team came to us, and I think several of us put together discretionary funds and gave them $6,000? I got a text, text message saying that all of their teams won their division, four of the seven teams made it to their regional competitions, and their 14-year-old team is gonna compete in their divisions, Division II National Championship in Florida next month. So we invested in them, that investment paid off, like I said, I want to see our investment pay off, and this was one that did, so congratulations to the Palmdale Knights, and I think we should talk about helping them get to Florida. What they say, Eric? Everything's coming up Palmdale. Everything's coming up Palmdale. Yeah, it's been a great year for, for the City of Palmdale. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak from the public? How you doing, sir?
Good, good evening, committee, sorry, I've never done this before, so.
Welcome.
I just want to share it with you, so I'm a veteran, I grew up here, graduated high school AV, went to the Army, came back, so the last two years, I partnered, I think I saw Alejandro somewhere over here, maybe he left, but AV Bogga, they reached out to me. I opened a catering business, veterinarian, barbecue, I've done a lot of work with them. Had the opportunity to do the Welcome Home Vietnam Veteran Thing last, or, what, March? That was absolutely epic. There's a lot of good things out here, there's a lot of veterans. I work aerospace as well, and our veteran community out here, huge. I don't know if you guys know, but there's a lot of groups out here, they're veterans, looking out not only for veterans, but community as well. Mental health is a huge thing, you know, a lot of us out there, we deal with it constantly. So just a little goodness that's going on outside the valley, I know, you hear some bad things, good things. We do have an event, not me personally, it is one of my good friend's Vet Projects, and he is doing a drive-through toy drive for force responders and veterans for the first hour. It is Sunday, so if you can be out there, it's, every veteran and first partner comes through, you get free lunch from my company, Smoke and Vice BBQ, and bunch of toys, he has a lot of toys, so give it out there and just anyone in need, and it's all, majority of the guys that are doing it and girls, we are all veterans. So, you know, we gave back our country a long time ago, and we're still giving them back, so it's definitely invite you guys to come out, it's a good opportunity, and then I think I can get the flyer, I think a couple people have a flyer already, but, no, thank you, thanks for the time.
Thank you.
I can get you the flyer, I'll send you the flyer, I don't know the exact address, sorry.
On our website. Thank you for the feedback.
Since, we've got so many organizations that are doing wonderful things for the community, I just want to shout out, the True Memories Car Club is doing a toy drive at the Home Depot on 47th Street East, and it will be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, they're accepting new toys, and they will be distributing them the following week, so if you've got a moment and you've got a spare toy, drop it off between 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Home Depot.
Will they be bringing all the lowriders?
Yes, they will all be out there, and then they will be distributing them with all of the, with all of their cars.
Perfect.
Council will be sure to get all of these-
I'd like to point out that on that same day, December 21st, the AVTA is going to be holding the 2024 Holiday Drive-Thru Grocery and Toy Giveaway, same day, and that one is attended by hundreds of people who line up from early in the morning all the way until 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Wayada Markets is contributing hundreds of turkeys that will be given away that day. The reason I bring it up now is because some consideration ought to be given that these two events not be held on the very same day. Perhaps there could be some, some communication between the people that are organizing this other event, the one that's been talked about tonight, and AVTA. Both Mr. Olson and I are directors on that. I'd love to be in both places, but I am a director at AVTA, so I will be at the AVTA event, and the City of Palmdale contributes and is a partner in that event, and, and here we have a competing event that doesn't necessarily have to happen on the same day, perhaps something, some coordination could be done next year. But that's a, a great giveaway that day, it's gonna be toys, there's a huge amount of toys that are given away, as well as food and, and many other things, so perhaps some people can make both, but I have to be at the AVTA event, December 21st starts in the morning, goes till 3:00 in the afternoon. Thank you.
You have work to do.
What's that?
You have work to do. Okay. Mr. President, do you have something?
I was just gonna mention that we're gonna put all of these events on our website, if they're not already, but just real quickly, somebody asked the address for the toy drive-thru giveaway from Vets Project, and that address is 320 Grand Cypress Avenue, Unit 504 here in Palmdale, and that's going on from, it'll time on here, I'm sorry, 10, it begins at 10:00 AM for veterans and their families, and 11:00 to 2:00 for Antelope Valley families in general.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I think it's going to bring us to the adjournment. Tonight, we're gonna be adjourning in memory of Jim Perti, he was one of our former city managers, for those of you who know him, I know he's looking down on us, playing his harmonica, he was quite enthusiastic and quite the good player, but he was also a great city manager, and he left a profound mark on our city when he retired. So we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting to December 18th, 2024, right here, Palmdale City Council Chambers. Want to thank everyone for coming out, happy holidays, stay warm, get home safe, take care of yourself.
Please don't go yet, we've got cake.
Take care of yourself.
Grab some cake before you head out and celebrate with us.
We have cake.
Join us.
As well. It's a rather large cake, so don't go anywhere if you're hungry, but get home safe, stay warm, have a good night. This meeting is adjourned.